We'll call the meeting to order. We have everybody here tonight except for Calla. And so you're recording minutes for us tonight, I'm assuming? Yeah, thank you for coming and obviously for filling in. Let's see additions to the agenda.
We do have three additions to the agenda. One under consent. Agenda involves two coaching positions under business. Brad and Del will be here tonight to present some information on schools for equity and education. Although not here yet, so hope he's making it. And then on the personnel, we have one more targeted service piece. We did have one already with most of them and then right at the end we have one more come forward. So that's also an addition.
Okay. We have a motion to adopt the agenda.
Someone?
We have a motion by Cheryl, second by me. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay, approval correct minutes from the February 10th, 2015 regular meeting. Any corrections or additions? Make a motion to approve the agenda of that. We have a motion from Mark, second. And a second from Lou. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay, we're on financial reports. January 15th, 2015 treasures report. Cheryl?
I was able to get in this afternoon and Joan and I went through the bills. And I didn't see anything out of the ordinary that ever anything that couldn't be explained. I'm pretty new at this, so I asked a lot of questions and I'm sure I irritated Joan a little. But she was very pleasant, helped me a lot. Everything seemed to be above board and the same as well.
Okay.
I recommend that we approve it.
Okay. So we've got a couple of things. We have the treasures report, additional January bills and February 2015 bills. You're saying all three of those items are okay?
They appear to be okay.
Okay. Any discussion from anybody on any of those? Questions? Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second?
And a second by Heidi. Any further discussion?
Is that a motion to approve?
Motion to approve financial reports number one, added approval of bills one and two. Or would you like to have three?
I think maybe just doing my financial reports and adding approval of bills.
Okay, we'll do the financial, motion to approve the financial reports by me. Is it still seconded by you?
Yes.
So seconded by Heidi. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Then we have the bills. Additional January 2015 bills and February 2015 bills. We should be able to group those two together. And we have a motion by Lou. She actually made that motion first. Okay, and we have a motion by Cheryl, second by Lou. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Consent agenda. Okay, number one is review and consider approval of notice of desire to negotiate with Max Maher. I guess this is all pretty straightforward.
Yeah, and Bruce, this is a consent agenda.
Yeah, so you just want to redo them and then together?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would just go through them and let the public know what they are. And then it'd be one motion to approve all of them. That would include the addition piece.
Okay, so we'll read them all. We'll open up if there's any questions from anybody. And then review and consider approval of notice of desire to negotiate with Matt DeCausen. Review and consider approval of the following non-athletic assignments for the 2014-15 school year. Middle school play, one half Colleen Kelton and one half Jennifer Wurz.
They are splitting the stipend for that position.
Okay, and then on the addition to the agenda, review and consider the approval of the following athletic assignments for 2014-15 school year. Head golf coach Jesse Rasmussen. Eighth grade softball Tracy Peettenberg. So any, I guess we can start with a motion to approve. So we have a motion by Mark, second. Second by Lou. Any discussion on those items?
I was able to talk with Max this afternoon. And Jesse Rasmussen has never coached golf before, but he's the only one who applied. But he plays golf and his quiet credit was in golf in college.
Oh.
So he is qualified evidently. He was happy with getting him to volunteer for that position. And Tracy Peettenberg has never coached softball, but he has coached baseball. And he is pretty close with that hit softball coaching. So it sounds like a good match also.
Yeah, I would remind more than one of your most successful wrestling coaches. I don't believe he ever wrestled. I think he-
No, he didn't. Yeah, you're saying-
I think that coach grabbed a book, was highly motivated and had some pretty good success.
But it sounds like these coaches are qualified. I did talk to Max this afternoon.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay, that finishes all the consent. Now we are on business items. So we want to do, I think what we'll do is with the business item one and two, if Brad and Del doesn't show up, we'll just continue. If that's agreeable with the board. And then we'll catch him when he comes. So number one, review and discuss the 2015 MSBA Miss Cooperate Association Leadership Conference. Okay, we have Calla gone actually. So she left.
Slide it across and you're good to go.
No, first do you mind if I just read it? So we have everybody's input. Here's my take on attending the annual MSBA conference. The camaraderie gained as a board during the annual leadership conference is priceless. I always enjoy getting to know each other a little better. As far as the conference goes, the keynote speakers are awesome and inspiring. I will always come away learning so much. My favorite breakout session this year and also very relevant for us was the session about school district referendums and off-year elections. I took notes and look forward to sharing these with the board when we begin discussing the new gymnasium again. I am very thankful for the opportunity to attend and proud to say I am, my district is Painsville Area Schools. Calla, about me. Maybe I just don't know what Casey means there. And anybody else want to go or just go right down the road? Good? Do you want to start, Randy?
Sure. I also really enjoyed attending the conference. There were a lot of things I did learn that I did not know. But one of the key, I had several workshops that really dealt with the CTE programs that were very interesting to me. Some of the numbers that were given out there, when the, when these kids are in the CTE programs and they combined in math, science, and English, and they incorporated into these programs, these kids seem to excel. The numbers given out, when they're talking about Minnesota graduation rate, the CTE kids graduated at 98.66%. Where that statewide average is 79.8%. MCA reading 10th grade, the state average score is 60%. The CTE average is 79.1%. MCA 11th, MCA math 11th state average was 49.8%. Where the CTE average score was 63.7%. And they kind of went through all these CTE programs and what the schools are doing from, and they go out to their communities because communities are the most important part of a CTE program. Without those, that help in the community and the community telling them what they need, they say a program cannot be successful. So you go to your community, you find that out. Then the next important thing is, they say, the teachers. You need to have teachers so that they can integrate math, science, English into these programs. And they said that's a lot tougher than you think. But once you get that done, the kids totally excel. And there's all kinds of CTE programs out there that you can go to different schools and find out what they're doing. And see how successful they are at it. But each school district is kind of their own little entity when it comes to CTE because every community looks at this and needs something different. One of the schools, they, their kids go, they, the community got together and they set up an automotive class where these kids can come out and they're ASE certified. They can go out when they graduate and they can work as an automobile mechanic right out of school. They get certified. But it's all due to they got English, math, and science integrated. And these kids are excelling in these programs. This is teaching teachers how to teach these programs to these kids. So I guess in the end, it is kind of ironic when I go through this, I looked at what all these classes are doing from horticulture where the kids are getting involved. From welding where they get certified to practical nursing where they're getting something there where they can go on to nursing. They're already further ahead. I mean, it's unbelievable what they're doing. There are so many programs out there. And the ironic part, after I come back from this, I was on the internet looking around at different school districts, looking at different things. And Dassault du Cucito must have been at the same meeting I was at. Because they sent a letter out to, it says, "Dassault du Cucito students, staff, parents, community members, and business leaders." And they go on and they continue to say that the Dassault du Cucito school board has set a goal to increase opportunities for students in the career and technical education area. Anyway, this letter goes through and it's asking the community and the business leaders to come in and sit down and let's talk about what the community needs, what is important to the community. These CTE kids will make the community grow. Because these kids get in these trades areas and more likely come back to our community than that. So anyway, they have a list of CTE programs that they got, which I thought was pretty extensive. But they say they don't have enough and they want to help businesses. And it is amazing how many people did show up for this program. So yeah, was it worth it? Yeah, I believe the conference is worth it. I learned a lot about this and about a lot of other stuff. And really, the conference as a whole was about, in everything I took, was pretty much about community involvement in your schools. Except for negotiations. Didn't say nothing about community involvement. So that's pretty much it.
Lou, wasn't there? Oh, that's right. Okay, well then, went on Wednesday night Marketing Basics. So tried to make use of all the time that we could. And they summarized the process and suggestions for this year. Happens every couple of years. Thursday morning and Friday morning, they had round tables. And those were very interesting. These are tables that are probably eight foot in diameter with six, eight people around it. And then we were too deep around those. And they would throw a topic, somebody was a leader, and then you could follow it. So the ones that I looked at were, I attended one on grading where they looked a little bit different at grading and not just following the percentages. They, they tried to look at the children, or children, students, a little bit more to see how grading would work. The instructor that was putting it on said that was a whole learning experience in itself, but it was a grading system that they started. Then I attended a meeting and I brought their literature from all of these, but proactive approach to public media. It was a school called Hayfield and they had had some issues with public media that were, in their minds, hard on some kids. And was not doing positive things for them. And so they put together a whole system to try and manage the public media within the school system. And they tied it with some, some support of other things the kids did. So that if they violated and really got off on something where it was bothering other students, that there were penalties for that. So it was to just keep it clean. It was very, very interesting. Then I went to one on G A S B 68. And honestly, I don't know all the details on this one, but it bugs me. And what it is, is the state is coming out to all of us in short and they are, they are running short in the teacher's retirement fund. So it's not perpetuating on itself as well. So they are going to send us sometime, I thought it was May, I guess it might be a little earlier, a number that we have to book on our financial statements. For our responsibility of that short run. Very concerning to me because they were talking about, because the market hadn't performed in the last number of years. And we are right now at the top of a market and it's performing excellent since 2008. I think their problems could be more serious than what they're looking at. But we are going to post it and it's going to take, most school districts are going to then look like we are in the red. Supposedly Moody's is a rating organization, is supposed to understand how this works. So it doesn't hit us when we go out looking for bonds and things like that, according to the people from the state. We're not supposed to have to pay that. So we'll see where that goes. I don't understand why we're doing it. I don't understand if it's a method of something that they're, they're posting at the state that they get out to us to make the state look, budget look better. I couldn't quite get a feel for it, but it may be very uncomfortable.
Yeah, I think that's primarily accounting procedures is what is coming forward. That is, is going to mandate how we take care of that and where it shows up on the books. As far as I can tell, looking at it, there will not be any actual accountability to the schools, but who knows what will happen in the future. But there are accounting practices and procedures that we're going to need to follow.
Yeah, very concerned about it. I had said, so how do we explain this to everybody? There was nobody there that had a, a good method for us to explain to people exactly what was going on. Other than this is coming from the state and you're going to post it on your financial statements. So then I watched, or was at one of them on bidding basics where they had an order sheet for things to watch as we bid. We have things that we're doing right now, Bob is up to snuff on most all of that because of what we have going on with the, the referendums that we passed. But it was just kind of interesting. Went to show and tell. So there's this showroom that has companies from all over showing their letters. Whether it be gymnasium floors, counting procedures, engineering firms, all of that kind of stuff. But they have a show and tell area that usually schools are there. Last year I saw an aviation program that was put on by Claire Candy, Canby. This year, and I'll just be brief about it, they had Faribault on in their automotive program, talking about the ASE program they had. And they also worked something out with one of the, the two-year schools near them that it would, if they got them out of that program, it would post a bunch of credits towards that degree coming out of their two-year school. Very fascinating. Then I got into brand marketing of districts. Centennial Schools, it's now by Leno Lakes and that area. They have put together three schools and they kept their sports team insignia. But they're all together as far as financial management and everything and what they call the schools. And it's called Centennial Schools. And they were trying to drag the community in. So every seminar I went to talking about Randy and his deal with CTEs dragging the community in, it was community involvement. It was the only thing that made everything work. And what they did is they made some signs and it said, "We are Centennial." That's all it said. And actually Centennial Schools, but the schools were a little smaller. And they brought these signs that were about this big and gave them to businesses all through the community. And in the, in the areas of the district, they said every business took them and they posted them in their windows. So that there was something out there about it. They also did, were doing brochures and things like that, trying to get the school. They went to a quarterly newsletter and instead of making a fancy booklet, a staple and everything, they bought a big sheet printed and then they folded it in four. And you opened it up and you saw one whole side was full of all the activities that were going on, all the positive things about academics and all of that. Plus some of the sporting issues that were going on, flipped it over and it was very, very complete. They said their postage when they did the single sheet folded up was nominal compared to what it would be to send out an actual brochure. And then they didn't have all the cutting and the stapling and all that kind of stuff. Very, very interesting. They put on a brand marketing program and in their first year spent $13,000. So everybody who was there listening to this whole field and thinking this is a pretty expensive program, put it all on for $13,000. Then I went to New All and that was jumpstart positive change in your community. Well, the mall school district needed some stuff. So what they did is incorporated the community. They got involved with the city. They had two parochial schools. Do they still call them parochial schools? Is that a technical term or they got something?
Right, private schools.
Private schools, okay. So they had two private schools, they had a public school, they have a community end program that was very active, but not within the school district and the city. They all got together and they started to talk about what they needed and everything. And the whole school board went into the meetings just wondering where it would all turn out. And all of them said they couldn't believe what happened. The net effect of everybody being involved was a brand new high school. And along with that, a whole bunch of other things. They had community members that knew people, that knew people, that got half a million dollars for one of their tracks or something. And, but it was a total community thing. And what they did is they opened up their doors. So all the private schools, everything in the community, all just kind of came together. But it appeared that that's what made it work. The last thing I attended was civil and human rights for school boards. And we are in the process of that somewhere along the way here.
The civil rights meeting that we had had, it was in my report, but they canceled off there was a family emergency for the person who was coming down. So we're looking at rescheduling that visit at the end of March. So after that, then we'll have an idea of what we're doing well and what we need to correct.
And I just went to that because I knew it was a topic coming and I thought I should have a little heads up. Heidi?
Yes, I thought the leadership conference was very informational. Sometimes a little overwhelming because there was a lot of information. They have just a lot of things that you have to know and a lot of learning that I have to do. But one of the breakout sessions that I went to that I thought was very good was called Smart Snacks in School. And they talked about the USDA's smart snack in school nutrition standards. They talked about the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act of 2010. And just how, how they impacted our school lunches and everything. And just shared the nutrition standards and how challenging it is to meet those nutrition standards. Especially like the sodium content. So just kind of opened my eyes and how challenging it is for our food service to meet those standards and yet still meet the needs of our kids. And I guess what was interesting is that some of the schools just, they had to be creative in how they were going to meet those needs and yet still meet the needs of the kids. And I, one area that Hutchinson did was they called it, they called it a second chance breakfast. And we all know that breakfast is such an important meal for our kids, for a good learning environment. And we also know that a lot of, especially in our older kids, don't take the time for breakfast or wait in the morning before they come or before the first class. But what Hutchinson did is they increased the time between their first and second hour to six to seven minutes. And they set up kind of a cart in the main traffic area where kids could come through, grab a breakfast to go in a baked, you know, baked lunch kind of thing. And go to their class and have a quick breakfast, like a granola bar and fruit or something like that. And they said they were able to do it in that time, you know, manner and just the number of kids that took advantage of that. So I thought that was very interesting. And I think it's an area that I hear a lot of kids, you know, complaining about. And I guess kind of motivated me to, maybe with our wellness committee, get together and talk about it and see if we can come up with some creative ideas on how we can work together with the food service and, and everything. So that we can meet the standards that we have to follow and yet make sure our kids aren't, you know, aren't hungry. So I thought very interesting and I'd say I hope to be able to share more of that in our wellness committee and see if we can meet the needs. So yes, otherwise the whole conference and the whole, very informational, definitely something that I will continue to attend. And I think any of those just have such a wealth of knowledge that is very good to go to.
I too like the leadership conference. It's very informational. We get to talk to other school representatives from high up all the way down to the newest board members. We get perspectives from a lot of different areas, along with all of the knowledge that's presented to us. And it's a very concentrated learning session. We start Wednesday night with our first session. We start again in the morning, or Wednesday night, Thursday morning, we start at 7:30 with registration. And we stay, most of us went to the early sessions and the late sessions. Friday morning, we had early sessions again at 7:30 in the morning with registration. And closed at noon. And in all of that time, we're moving from room to room, listening to each speaker and conversing. I don't know about the rest of you, but we skipped lunch one day because we were just too busy talking. We just didn't bother. And the, the information is just phenomenal. The keynote speakers are always great. We had Kevin Honeycutt, was one that I was really interested in. He started out in poverty and it didn't sound like he had a very good school experience, but he ended up quite a leader in his school. And now he's telling everybody else how to do it. One of his phrases that caught me was, "It's healthy to learn. No matter what age a person is, it's important to continue to learn, especially if it's our job to lead." That really sunk home for me. I guess because it's something we always believed that we're never too old to learn. Kevin Honeycutt also put on a workshop with the superintendent from Inman Schools, Kevin Case. One of the things that they reiterated over and over was our school should have a Twitter page and a Facebook page. And strict rules as to how it's governed. But we should be using those to advertise our school. We can have pictures of our teachers teaching, we can have videos of what our kids are doing. There's a lot that we can put out there on Facebook. I know it's very active. I don't tweet, but I do Facebook. Another phrase he used a lot was sell what we are doing. I'm amazed at how much I don't know that goes on in the schools and in the elementary school. It just, when I went on my walk-through with the superintendent, I was just not flabbergasted, but just so happy to see what was going on with our, our elementary children. And I know the high schools are the same way because I hear from the kids every now and again. Another phrase he used, he used a lot of phrases. Learn to love to learn. I thought that was a great one. We can use that one. But we need to toot our own horn. We need to tell everybody what we're doing, how we're doing, and how we like it. And the same with our students. When we like ourselves, everybody else will learn like us too, if they don't already. I know there are a lot of community members who love our school and I know that it will go on if we can just keep the word going. I guess some of the other things were touched on by the others and I just- I guess, uh, some of the other things were touched on by the others and I just, I love the leadership conference. It's great. And we take advantage of every minute of learning that we can down there. Nobody, nobody hides out down there. Everybody was on the run constantly. It was great.
I do have to say that we're down there with the superintendent we have of Robert Hewitt. And we kind of summarized where we were going, just the same as when you guys were down, so that we all didn't show up at the same place. Um, we had to grasp, there were so many seminars that we thought what was important, we kind of picked them out. I, I'm not sure I was in a seminar with any of these. We all went somewhere else so we could get a better feel of it. So thank you, Mr. Hewitt, on keeping us organized too.
Well, the board is certainly busy, I can tell you that.
Okay, if nothing else there, um, review consider approval of board resolution asking our state legislators to support formula funding growth for schools and the students of the state of Minnesota.
Yeah, this resolution really started with Litchfield and the concerns that a number of superintendents are having with the fact that, uh, our governor has come out with his budget, which says that we'll get one percent possibly first year, one percent the second year. But even with that, it just will not simply keep up with inflation and the needs of the, of, uh, the schools. So he kind of put this together. I think there's a lot of good things in here that talks about the need for the state to really come through and do the educational funding the way that it's intended to do and for us to keep up with inflation when we haven't even been doing that. So certainly, um, board can read through that. If the board chooses to approve this resolution, uh, what I will do is I'll put a little cover letter together tomorrow and I will, uh, copy the resolution. I will send it to our legislatures so that they have an understanding that the board is in favor of this. They voted on it and they believe that the state needs to come through with some solid financing so that we're not continually cutting.
I'll make a motion that we approve that resolution and that you put that better together.
Second.
Second, uh, motion for myself, seconded by Cheryl. Any further discussion of the board?
Business topic.
Yep. And any, any comments from the public? Did they get a copy of that resolution?
Uh, there should have been copies out there.
You guys see it?
Yeah, and certainly also Brad is here now and he'll certainly talk from C's perspective on some of the financing pieces that, uh, we believe they're not following through with.
Okay, no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, it is a resolution.
Oh.
Like a low call.
Yeah.
Mark?
Yep.
Heidi?
Yeah.
Yes. Yep.
First, Heidi.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Okay, I will put a letter together on that and send it off to our legislatures, legislatures on that.
Okay, next on the agenda, I, I should back up for the public. Um, number one, I did ask for public comment on number one. With the school board association meeting, anybody?
Tell the audience, say, I'm Cheryl. A few of us teachers at elementary school, a lot with the pair and that to close and are working on updating our website. So we've got to be set next week, I think. We have a pair that has some tech savvy computer graphics, so she's going to help us do some stuff.
Great.
And we've been working on some ideas, so.
Another great thing that's happening in the manual school system, we just gotta tell people about it.
We're gonna.
Okay, so, um, number three then will be Brad, Lindell and, um, so if you could come down to this microphone down here.
Sure.
Um, we have, uh, the public that watches this, uh, at home. And if they can hear you, it makes it more clear for them. And he will be presenting information on schools for equity and education.
And there is a slideshow if the board wants to move or just they were there.
Um, what do you guys want to do? I'll move out, place some of the members in. Well, I'm hoping the back of my head, I've been told I have a face for radio, so. Okay. Don't really want to. Uh, well, it's great to be out here. I hope I wasn't late because I had trouble getting out of the parking lot. The problem is the parking lot goes all the way out to four ninety-four, so. But it was, uh, it's good to be out here again. Uh, uh, nice to be amongst a member and have you folks ask questions about what we're doing C this year. I'm glad to hear you just passed that resolution that Dan Fraser has been working on. I think it's very, very important and I think that the legislature needs to hear, uh, from their local school districts about, uh, their challenges moving forward and how the general education formula not being sufficient to meet those needs. Um, why don't we move to the next slide and we can, um, talk a little bit about the history of C. It was founded in nineteen seventy-nine. Uh, the name that when it was first founded was the Association of Stable or Growing School Districts. Now that acronym doesn't really fall off the tip of your tongue. Uh, but one of the reasons for that is that in nineteen seventy-nine, the states was, um, most of the state was in this severe declining enrollment. And the members of the Association of Stable or Growing School Districts, which is very, uh, pretty tight definition. Those districts were either stable or growing while the rest of the state was declining. So they were building buildings and they were using property wealth to, you know, keep up on, on the building front, which left them, uh, with a little wiggle room in terms of passing operating referenda or, um, some of the other things that they would like to have done. So they came together and, uh, you know, tried to work on the property wealth issue because again, a lot of the districts in metropolitan area that were declining were at very high levels of property wealth and were able to pass huge referenda. In fact, if you look at the differential between those districts and districts like Painesville, on the referendas is one of the big differences in terms of per pupil funding. Uh, the organization is largely, we largely composed the plaintiffs in the scheme versus Minnesota lawsuit that was filed in nineteen eighty-eight. Uh, the organization, well, um, the plaintiffs won at the district court level. Brad, can I interrupt you for one second? Will you pull that microphone out a little closer to where you're talking? If I remember right, they like to have a pair of.
Okay, there you go. I hope they like what I say.
They will. The public needs to hear what you're talking about. Uh, but we were largely the, the plaintiffs in the scheme lawsuit that won at the district court level, lost at Supreme Court level. But one of the things that happened as a result of that victory at the district court level was greater equalization of the referendum debt service levies so that the taxpayers in places like Painesville got more bang for their tax dollar, for their buck than they do in some, in, you know, not as much as in high wealth districts, but at least we narrowed the gap somewhat. Uh, we renamed ourselves Schools for Equity and Education in nineteen ninety-five. Um, I think that I get lots of phone calls from a lot of different groups that have different definitions of equity than ours. We look mostly at adequate and equitable funding for schools. And that means, you know, high basic formula, but then also we look at the taxpayer and how the taxpayer is treated in terms of property taxes, uh, probably a little more closely than some of the other organizations. It's kind of the heart of why we were organized as low property wealth school districts to, to make sure that the property taxpayers aren't asked to do too much that, or else if they're asked that it's, it's done in a fair manner. They shouldn't have to run it on the, they shouldn't have to put forth two or three times the effort to generate the same dollars they do in places that have high wealth. So, thanks. Uh, C member benefits, believe me, it, 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 it's a constant presence as a state capital these days. I'm there pretty much every day from, uh, early in the morning till, uh, last meeting for me usually ends about two thirty and then I'm either back to the office or today, uh, you know, you know, coming out here. Uh, it's going to get a little bit more constant after, uh, next week when they'll start working more with night meetings. They've had a couple of night meetings already, but, um, we're there. Uh, I'm there. Deb Griffiths is also there. She's taking folks around now to meet with legislators and Dan Hill. Um, but, uh, you know, state capital, we are a lobbying organization. That's what we do. That's why we were formed. Uh, most of what we do is, you know, bend the ear of legislators that we think need to hear about problems that our districts face, both in terms of adequacy and then equity in, in the property tax realm. We worked out quality programs at our general membership meetings on relevant timing topics. Randy was there last week along with Bob and, uh, we had the, uh, representatives from the Teachers Retirement Association talking about somehow some of the accounting changes are going to, you know, send a shiver through, uh, school districts. Not, it's, it's something that there's going to be some need to, you know, work with the public to understand that. And then also, uh, we bring in a legislative plat, we bring in a legislative, um, forum every, at every meeting. We have six or seven of them, uh, through the year. Uh, we also have three sets of regional meetings as well. Uh, we, I think one of the chan, one of the real pluses of being an organization, an organization of fifty-eight members is when you come to meetings or when you come to the regional meetings, you see other districts and get to talk to other districts about the challenges that you're facing, similar challenges, maybe challenges that you've already faced or are facing. You find people, how they've handled some of the same things. And so that networking, I think, is, is very valuable. I hear that from members that they do like and enjoy, uh, you know, brainstorming and working on solutions with, with, uh, districts in similar situations. We do a lot of data on our Schools for Equity website. We've got tons of data and resources that are specific to your school district. And that is, our aim in that is to help you communicate with the community legislators when we talk about where you rank, you know, what, where you rank in terms of various funding streams, uh, where you fit sit, uh, you know, in conjunction with the state average. All those kinds of things that we can provide. And I, uh, I've been doing, uh, you know, I can, uh, I can dissect a Excel spreadsheet fairly well from doing it all these years. And I can, you know, customize the information that the state's provided in ways that you think will work best as you try to make your case with your community legislators as to, uh, on any, you know, specific funding issue. Deb Griffiths is our community outreach liaison. She, we, she connects with your community and what she does, um, again, I've been doing this quite a while and I get into jargon and legislative ease and, uh, kind of a foreign language that I speak around the legislature. And Deb, Deb's a good plain English speaker and can translate a lot of the belonging that I'm throwing around into something that's, uh, uh, more digestible and then certainly, uh, easier to make the case as you're talking to, again, your local legislators, state leaders and your community.
And for people that from Painesville, me going on to visit the Capitol, I can't remember the date that I sent, oh, I thought it was.
March tenth.
March tenth.
March tenth.
Um, for that, if anybody's, um, interested in doing that in the community, they should just get ahold of me and, and set it up. And certainly I'd love to see some board members go down and have some board members bring a couple of other people with them to go down on March tenth. But Deb sets that all up. You're not alone. You, you meet and she takes you on a great experience on that date.
Uh, Deb, what she'll do is she'll set up the meetings with your legislators and then it's kind of, uh, uh, just a kind of a caravan through to meet your legislators and to talk with your legislators. And, and she does a very, very good job. And it's a, it's not the right, it's not the good year to go down to the Capitol, to have a meeting at the Capitol because you'll see a lot of plebs. And you'll also see the defer, you'll also see the need for, you know, smart deferred maintenance policy. Because they've let about forty or fifty years of deferred maintenance go by the wayside and, and, uh, we're paying for it now.
Yeah, so anybody that can, you know, help Randy find some people, you know, that are willing to accompany on, on that, um, visit, that would be fantastic. It's, it's hard for just one board member to find the people that would go down because not everybody's willing to go down. So I would certainly ask the board to talk to a few people who you might think might be interested and, and set it up with Randy and, um, hopefully we'll get a few people to go down and visit our legislators.
Those on this and they take you through really fast, so I don't think you're going to be bored. Nope. Just as you move and, and you're going to one legislator after another, they're waiting for you. It's very nice. Deb was trained. Deb was trained as an engineer and, uh, she was a mechanical engineer and, uh, she's very concrete sequential and, and it's like she's got that machine going, so. Um, here's the, here's an example of some of the things that we do in terms of data. And this is very, you know, kind of straightforward. But if you look at where, I brought my laser pointer. Um, but if you look at where Painesville sits in state average, you're about seven hundred dollars or a little over seven hundred dollars below state average, a little bit below three hundred dollars, uh, or two hundred and sixty dollars, it looks like, uh, the C average. And the difference really is the referendum here is seven sixty-two. It's a thousand dollar average in C and eleven twenty-three. But you'll see where that, uh, you know, the, the little bit more than seven hundred comes from, uh, the compensatory revenue being about two hundred dollars more in statewide average than it is in Painesville. But Painesville's above the C average. Uh, a couple of other places where you'll see you're not an alternative compensation district for the TDD funding, whereas state average is a hundred and nineteen. But that basically half the districts in the state have the alternative comp or Q comp program. And they are, they have resources of about two hundred and sixty dollars per kid to do the teacher, to the teacher evaluation development that you're going to be doing. Well, we don't know if that's going to be there next year because that was a one-time, uh, a one-time appropriation for districts that weren't in alternative compensation. We'll have to see what happens with the governor's supplemental budget, if he's going to put some money in there. Because it's a mandate and right now you've got districts that, some districts that are, have really no resources or no ongoing resources to do something that every district in the state's going to have to do. That's something we're hopeful is going to be addressed this year and certainly something that we're going to be talking about. That kind of shows you where, you know, where, uh, Painesville sticks in conjunction with other, uh, school districts throughout the state. And again, we're, we're, I mean, you're not geographically isolated, so there's no sparsity. You're, you're kind of on the cusp of small schools because I think you're right around a thousand.
We're a little less than Paul's.
Right, and if you would, if, I think that you're just not to where you're generating dollars right now. But, uh, that's another, uh, thing. And, uh, I think you have to get down to about six hundred, five hundred students before you really generate considerable dollars in the small schools. But it's still a challenge with the declining enrollment and with the, uh, or even steady enrollment. If you don't get money on the basic formula that, you know, you're, it's, it's, it can be very much a challenge. Should we ask questions as we? Oh, I guess. A little compensant or compensatory, uh, okay, so, or compensatory. Here's what happens. The C is three oh seven, so that's all the small schools. I want to make sure I have that right.
Well, compensatory is based, compensatory is based on your free reduced price lunch.
Okay.
That's the free reduced price lunch.
So the C average, but the C is generally smaller schools.
Well, we've got, um.
Or do you have some other schools in that?
Well, there's bigger schools.
We have a wide range. We go all the way down. I think our smallest is like, um, East Central up in, you know, up in Sandstone and our Bay. I mean, districts like Anoka, Hennepin and, uh.
North British.
Are they included in that?
They're included in that, but.
I got you.
Compensatory really doesn't have anything to do with your size because there's some very big districts, like private, like a very big district and they get maybe a hundred dollars per pupil.
I got you.
Because it's the, it's the kind, it's the number of free reduced price lunch students you have and then how much concentration, like in Minneapolis and St. Paul, where you've got buildings where seventy percent of the kids are in free reduced price lunch or eighty percent of the kids are in free reduced price lunch. They generate a lot of dollars. Whereas here, uh, you've only got three built, well, I think you got three buildings.
Well, we have, but the one building, the elementary is the only one that gets the compensatory dollars.
Right, yeah. And so there, so you're only going to have concentration in one building. I think the other thing, you go to some districts, and Oseo's not a member of C, but in Oseo where you've got some districts, because they've capitalized on a, on a building basis, you'll get districts that, you'll get a, elementary school is very concentrated, but then it'll move together with two other elementaries and junior high that have very little concentration. One of the things that's really puzzling to me is that you're saying that in an elementary school level, that this child is worth an extra five, six hundred dollars, but then they go to, uh, junior high and they're, they're worth two hundred dollars. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So that's a formula that I think really needs to be taken apart and put back together. Uh, there's a lot of, I mean, Minneapolis and St. Paul have some issues that are very unique to them. I think also some of the new entering suburbs like Columbia Heights, Fridley. Uh, some of the regional centers like Albert Lee Austin, uh, St. Cloud have, you know, a lot of, um, immigrants that are moving in. And so there's a lot of English language needs and, and those types of things. And so I'm not going to say that there shouldn't be a compensatory formula, but the way that the money is distributed really does need to be taken. It needs to have a, a closer look at, are we achieving, is the state achieving what it's trying to achieve with compensatory? And where does that balance with the basic formula? I mean, I think for our districts in C, we just soon see the dollars going in the basic formula. I think we've got six districts of our fifty-eight members that are above the state average in terms of.
in terms of compensatory. But even they say money on the formula is really where the, where the dollars are best served. Because I weren't, again, we don't have Minneapolis and St. Paul. I think Fridley's, Fridley, Fairbowl, Albert Lee Austin districts that are having challenges with new Americans and then also the English language learning issues. Flip to the next one. Here's what, what we did in, this is based on 2014 because the change was made in 2013. When I talk about equalization of the referendum, you know, equalization's a state, it's, it doesn't mean equal dollars for equal whatever. Equalization talks more about tax effort. What equalization means is that, again, an increment of tax effort in a high wealth district shouldn't raise considerably more than an increment of tax wealth in a low wealth district. So what we, what we do is we get the state to participate on the formula and so they get some dollars into, to help local taxpayers. Now, the formula that was, came about as this, from Ski and Lassie wasn't updated for 20 years. And so what we did from pay 13 to pay 14 is we updated that formula so that in pay 13, on the first 760 or I think you didn't put that, 760 dollars per pupil in your referendum, 23% of it was state revenue, 77% was local. Now, for the first 356% is state, a 44 local and then on from the 300, $300 per pupil to $760 per pupil, it's 24% state, a 76% levy. That translated to $102,000 of total taxpayer savings. Taxpayer savings were about $98 per kid. That would, that transferred them from levy to aid on a per kid basis. So $98 of levy was turned into $98 of aid. A couple things are accomplished by that. Your taxpayer's gonna break. Someday you might need to go back to them and ask them for either a building bond or for more referendum. And I think that that savings gives them the opportunity to say, you know, we can still say yes or no, but we're not being asked to do more than they are in other parts of the state in terms of our property tax effort. We would like to have this number that doing this 56%, we'd like to move that up a little more to the 760 level. But again, with the, with the progress we made in 2013, it's probably gonna have to wait a couple of years before we can start to really work on that. We are working on a facilities piece this year and I think that the property tax effort needs to be part of that discussion and we'll talk a little bit more about that when we talk about our goals for this session. Again, we, and again, thanks for passing the Litchfield because we wanna talk about increased concentration on the basic formula. That's the dollar that every kid in the state gets. That's the, you know, that's the, that's the engine. And I think that's the big locomotive and we wanna make sure that that big locomotive can carry all the districts in the state. I think the other thing, when you get money on the basic formula, it gets everybody thinking about where they're the same instead of where they're different. One of the things I've seen in all these years that I've been working on education policy is that the temptation now is to go to your legislator and say, well, it'll be some, well, something will be good for me and no one else. And I, you know, I know Painesville's never done that. I think we've had other C members that have thought of, have done some of those things. But we need to have, we need to think about each student and what's the state's constitutional obligation and making sure that the basic formula is the way that that obligation is met. So I think that's, we need to continue, you know, palming that. Continue to work on progress toward making school levies more affordable. Part of that fits into number three because the School Facilities Working Group, and many of you have seen Tom Miltcher's presentation on that. I think it's, it's very good. It showed how much deferred maintenance, what the true needs throughout the state are for the deferred maintenance and how many of those needs have gone unmet. It's very, very expensive. It's like, it's a, it's a pretty big loaf of bread to take in one gulp. So I think it's one of these things which, again, probably gonna have to really make a commitment there but realize that it's probably gonna be take a little more time than what they have put out in that facilities funding. Again, the debt service equalization's part of that. I've also been working last couple, last few weeks now, there's a legislator from, I don't know, is Lau Kun in your legislator or is he just southwest of here? He's a, has a lot of, when you get out to this part of the state, ag land issues, the tax on ag land issues are getting to be reaching, you know, kind of a crisis or point. And I think that we're working there to try to do something that will mitigate those high ag land taxes without pushing the burden onto everybody else. One of the things you do there, you know, is to try to get some state revenue into those to help, you know, mitigate again those, those high ag property taxes. Because I think some folks are saying they might take the ag off the tax base. Well, if you take the ag off the tax base, it really does cause some dislocations and causes effort to go up for, for a lot of folks. And so what we're trying to do is find a balanced way to do that and we continue to work on that. But the debt service equalization is, you know, something, again, that we're working on to try to make sure that, you know, people are getting their facilities need and then also greater commitment to deferred maintenance. And again, those are, probably come through in terms of board levies. And again, board levies are always kind of nerve wracking because some boards can do them and some boards can't and that's why you gotta have that tax fairness piece. And so we're working to try to make sure that if they go down the road of, you know, board authority, that, that board authority's gonna have to be something fair because if it's not, some districts are gonna use it a lot and some districts aren't and that's an equity issue and we really look at that. Lastly, I mean, this, this is an abbreviated list. And I'll talk a little bit about a couple other bills that I think could be helpful for Painesville. The teacher evaluation law, teacher evaluation, development evaluation, I forgot the D there. But districts, some districts have the Q comp, alternative comp, some districts don't. You don't, we certainly wanna make sure that you're gonna have the resources to do what you need to do as you, you know, go through your next round of the teacher development evaluation. There's a bill that was introduced by Representative Dave Baker, House File 663. That's a bill that would change the equity formula. If you read my blog, I call it the equity formula, the John Rivers of funding formulas because it's been, it's had so many procedures done, you can't even recognize it anymore. So it's the, the, so I think that, but that would, would give metro equity to all districts in the state. There's a demarcation between metro and non-metro equity. And that would, I don't have, I maybe have to run with me, but I, and I'll check that. It's probably my folder, but I think it's another chunk of change for, for Painesville that would move them up on the equity formula. But that's another formula. We have to start looking at all formulas and saying, if it's not serving a purpose, it should probably go on the basic formula. I mean, it's general fund money, but again, if we can get that generalized formula to where it needs to be, we can probably get rid of some of these categorical formulas. And again, have districts start talking about where everybody's the same and how we're pulling it in the same direction. There's always gonna be differences between school districts and there's always gonna be somebody who wants something and someone else doesn't. But we need to make sure that everybody has the ability to make those decisions on the same basis, but then to also know that the Constitution applies to all kids, not kids in certain districts as opposed to others. Can flip to the- Our mission in, all public school children must have access to, equal access to high quality education regardless of where they live in Minnesota. Again, I really wanna thank you for your, you know, activity and you've been very active over the years and have worked to, you know, further our mission in this part of the state and as the state legislature as well. Check out our website. I blog pretty much daily during legislative session. I throw in a joke or two periodically and please don't, please don't grade my jokes. They're probably not as, they're probably in jargon. They probably need to be put in English so people laugh. But I think that, try to make it something that if people find valuable, I try to use, you know, look at some what's happening nationally sometimes, talk some, put those things in the blog, also talk about committee hearings that are going on and also I try to get every bill, education bill that's introduced and some of the non-education bills that have an effect on education. You know, with that, I can open up the question. Let me check and see first though on the, if I've got that data running. I may have left it in my fire trap. Don't, don't tell the fire marshal about my office. But the, yeah, right here. The run on House File 663, which is again, newly elected Representative Dave Baker from Wilmer in year 741, it would be another $23,000 for added equity for Painesville. So that's a bill I think that as you talk with, you know, it's not a, it's 23, I hope you're getting with $23,000 a session. But I think the thing is, is that it'd be a nice little bump. And I think it's another place where trying to raise the votes that are kind of below, below, you know, below average now to move them up. And I think this is a way to do that. So we're continuing to support bills like this. And again, we're, I think it's a big week coming up next, later this week, early next week, the February forecast comes in. You know, the legislature's always in trouble because the December, the November forecast comes out in December and the February forecast comes out in March. So that kind of shows you the way government works, I guess. But the, I think the, we'll know then, the economy seems to be doing a little bit better, but as I've always said, you know, Harry Truman always said, give me a one-handed economist because economists always keep saying, on the other hand. And so I think we need to have, you know, move forward. I, I'm sure that the legislature will move forward cautiously because we just don't know what oil prices where they are and that can be a mixed blessing because if you're working in the oil industry, if you're having investment in the oil industry, all of a sudden things don't look good for those folks while things look good for, for other folks. We don't know with ag prices and ag commodity prices, that always has an effect out in this part of the state. And so how that moving forward. So again, the economy's always gonna be iffy. I think things are kind of, we're on a slow slope upwards, but it's, again, I think that the legislature's gonna be very cautious about not overreaching as they put their budget together. That said, I would think that if there's another couple hundred million available for education, my guess is the governor will put it in probably the teacher development evaluation, probably some more money on the formula. I think some of the things that we're seeing, the universal pre-K program, my, my guess is, is that the House is going to have, the House this morning voted down a bill in committee that, on the universal pre-K. And people ask me, well, why would they vote down a bill this early in the session? I said, well, they weren't gonna do it and I think it's a statement. This is not the direction that we're going in House Representatives. So I think the, the universal pre-K is not gonna be coming out of the House. They'll take some of that 102 million that the governor has set aside for that program and probably move it into the formula. They'll do some of the scholarship programs. They're very, they're really bullish on scholarships and I think they're also probably put some money into school readiness. But my guess is there's probably gonna be $50 million of the 100 million that they will move into other, other places. Republicans in the Senate, they're the minority in the Senate. They had their press conference today. They talked about 3 and 3 on the formula. They didn't say exactly how they were getting to 3 and 3, but they, that's, their goal is to get to 3 and 3. The Senate Democrats, who are the majority, have talked more about, they've talked about the facilities, they've talked about a few other bills, talked a lot about the early childhood. But again, you know, I don't know of Painesville's exact situation when it comes to early childhood, but space concerns and transportation concerns when you get out to this part of the state, especially you have, depending on how many bus routes you have and if you're adding buses or adding bus routes, it gets to be a little bit more complicated than just like, oh boy, we've got, we've got all this money for pre-K, to do pre-K education. So very, very important and I think Senate, that's where the Senate and the governor are probably gonna go to a great extent. But I think the House is gonna be very resistant to really diving into that more heavily than, than the state's investment right now. Feel free at any time to contact me, either through my email, which is on the C website, or else my cell phone, 612-220-7459. Love hearing from you. I think it's, again, we view ourselves as a value-added organization. We wanna make sure that our members get value from what we do. We, you know, I mean, my mother would be shocked to hear that I follow directions, but I do follow. I, I, we want, we wanna make sure that we're doing what our members send us down there to do. Sometimes I get put in the corner and I gotta flip a coin, but I think we try to raise as many votes as we can at any given point in time. And again, it's really helpful for us in C because our membership, because of the low property wealth piece and because most of our districts, again, all but six of our districts are below the state average. So it's pretty easy for us, given, I think if you look some of the other organizations and they say, well, you know, my, my friend Bob says this, my friend Dan says this and I agree with my friends. And we're, we're able to say we've got a kind of a better core, I think, to what we do and how we approach things. Not that we do better work, but I think it's easier for us as an organization because, I mean, it's easier for us to speak with one voice on a, on a wide range of issues. So I thank you and shoot with any questions you might have.
Thank you very much.
Well, you're more than welcome. It's always, you know, coming on Highway 55, it's always, there's always that one person that thinks driving five miles at a high speed is a really good idea. I'm sure I'm not telling anybody here anything new, but they give you a dirty look in the past. Hey, that's the only dirty look I get today on the lock. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Governor.
Okay, this is a business item. So does the public have any questions? Kind of open up the floor with more to the board. Okay.
Thanks.
Oh, thank you. Okay, then we are gonna move to personnel. Review, consider approval of the following targeted services assignments for the 2014-15 school year. Targeted services math, Dan Kemper, 23 hours. Jeanne Haig, 20 hours. Michelle Moser, 20 hours. Laurie Schmidt, 20 hours. Targeted services reading, Jennifer Wirth, 12 hours. Marie Gross, 12 hours. Diane Schultz, 12 hours. Jeanne Haig, eight hours.
This is, this is a pretty normal procedure for this time of the year. These are cost neutral. We gain dollars by running this program. It's been an excellent program for us and certainly recommend that we approve.
We have a motion for Mark.
Second.
A second from Cheryl. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Review, consider approval of resignation request from Colleen Pelton, effective at the end of the 2014-15 school year.
This is always one of those that I'm sad, but I'm also happy. After 39 years, she is going to retire. She has a number of things. I believe that, and I can sort of pass this letter on to the, to the board and just she talks a little bit about her 39 years, her love for what she's been doing all these years, her desire to continue to sub and to do some of the theater things and score basketball games. So I think she'll continue to be very involved with the district. So very sad to see somebody of all that experience and what she's done for our district leave, but at the same time extremely happy she moves on to another part of her life in the retirement. Just pass that council board and take a look.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve. Second, a second from Lou. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And we move to the additions. Number three, review, consider approval of the following targeted services assignments for the 2014-15 school year. Targeted services math, Tuesday and Thursdays, March 3rd, April 16th, 3:10 to 4:30. Diane Schultz, 23 hours.
She's already doing reading. She just was, we added that at the last minute and just had to resume the issue.
Make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Second by Mark. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, we are down to informational reports. Meet and confer, Cheryl.
I was at the meet and confer meeting.
I was at the meet and confer meeting, and Bob presented his version of two calendars, one if the legislature does allow us to start before Labor Day and one if they do not. And in both calendars, he built in five snow days. I wonder if that's enough.
I could go in twenty, but it might not be enough. I think, I'm, I think I'm okay with the number of snow days that we've built in, so.
I think that's good. They did bring up a couple of issues. They wondered if we could not have sports events or hire our band concerts on conference evenings. And it was discussed in...
Well, yeah, we'll certainly take a look at it, it's just very difficult, or not so much, I think we might have a, a chance at least in the, the following. When we get to the winter conferences, we just have a lot of games. It just is more difficult. We'll certainly look and see if we can accommodate, but my guess is that we're gonna have to either move their conferences to a time when it's not best for the teachers because they kind of have a time window to get them in, or we're going to have to do them during one of the games. We're gonna do it a little different this next year, but we'll bring that forward when we bring a calendar forward.
And there's also the possibility that if we do start early, they discussed the possibility of starting on Monday instead of Tuesday, that week of September first, so it would be actually August thirty-first. And that's still in the air, Bob has some discussion to do first.
Yep.
If that would happen, then, then we could possibly leave President's Day as an open day and not a snow day. So it, it's still under discussion, but that was brought up.
Yeah, it was brought up, and I think at least right now, it's promising. Part of the problem is, is that with the contract, one of the state legislatures have come out with a bill that has said, "You can start early, but you can't go on Thursday or Friday." Well, if you do that, then we're back to three days before school starts. So there's just a, a lot of issues here, maybe in the end that I bring out one calendar and tell the board that if the state legislature change, or changes their binding laws to start early, I may just have to come back with a new calendar and have them dump the old one and bring the new one in because I can't figure out an easy way to do this, even if I come out with two calendars. Like the example with the one calendar, we start with four days, and then the state legislature tells me I can only go three of those days, then I'm stuck right back to where we would be, so there's no easy way. I'll do it as effectively as I can, but in the end, I don't think the legislature's gonna come out with that decision early enough, and we're gonna have to at least come up with a calendar.
That's where we're at.
And next, the technology committee, Mark Fiedler.
We met on March nineteenth. Our biggest challenge is our, our train to develop processes and procedures on how we're gonna be handling the monies that are coming in that were the voters approved. So we have several documents that we're looking at. We implemented a couple already just for the planning and purchase, so that when somebody's buying something that Jim and John are able to review them, is there other people in the districts that are looking at the same kind of technology and stuff like that? And then how to incorporate all that, and then at the end, when they get it, so not that somebody purchases something and then all of a sudden it shows up at our door here, and then Jim's looking at it and saying, "Well, what are we doing with this, and who gets it," and so on and so forth. So the biggest thing is the planning process, so that we have even flow, everybody gets the idea of what's going on with, with the technology. We have records keeping, so that at the end of the, the life of the computers or whatever we're doing, we have some paperwork to go back on and say, "This is what we've accomplished, this is what we've done," and all that documentation is gonna be there, which is gonna help, I think, in the future for possible other referendums that we might wanna go, you know, forth and so on and so forth. So, we did go ahead and, and this, this next go-around was for the staff with the new computers, so we did allocate out around sixty thousand dollars worth of new computers. They're gonna be coming in, and then Jim is gonna go through, Jim and John are gonna go through that, and then dispense it out to chief of staff and get them trained on how to do it and stuff like that. With that, also, you know, we're, we're looking at job descriptions now for, because Jim is about to be wrong forever, so we're looking at what can we do here internally. I think we need somebody internally here to help with some of the troubleshooting that the staff are having problems with and stuff like that. So right now, we have a couple of job descriptions that were given to us at the meeting. We, our assignments, we're to go back and, and review them and look at them and just come back with a plan on what that person might look like, who and what they're gonna do, and then just kind of, at some point in time, I suppose we'll bring it back to the board here to, we put up the plan together after the plan is kind of thought through at that level, bring it back up to here and say, "This is what the plan is from the committee," and then it will have to be voted on by us, but, because it's gonna be a position that, that we're gonna have to have here internally and stuff like that, in terms of what Jim Becker is providing at this time. So, those are a few things that we're looking at. We're also looking at different applications. Everybody, it was, is, you know, you know that it's happening, and it's, until you are actually sitting there listening to, I was, Mr. Spanier was talking about how many apps that he's gone through in the course of his tenure of trying to figure out what app would work in his classroom and stuff like that. Well, there could be a teacher just down the hallway that is going through the same type of research that don't know that this is what's going on, so that's another challenge that we're gonna be faced with, is how are we gonna handle some of this technology? How are we gonna handle some of the application apps that are available out there? And hopefully with all this, when we're said and done, at the end of the day, we're gonna have a better product, we're gonna have people that are gonna know what these products are able to do, for different teachers, so that they don't have to go through maybe the painstaking process that makes some of the other ones that are at that level. So, a lot of good stuff, more yet to come.
Very good. Transportation negotiations. We met this morning. Mr. Cordless has been a real asset, I think, a really good hire, and he's got a daughter, explained a lot of things, and does a very good job. So it did, I think it was a very productive meeting, and at this time, we've got a tentative agreement.
So hopefully at the next board meeting, we'll explain that and come to the board with approval.
When you get that agreement, how long is it for?
Um...
Well, that's part of it. Because we're kind of behind, actually.
Yeah, that's, that's part of it. I guess I prefer to bring that along to the board at, at the same time.
Okay. Administration, of course.
Okay, just a few things. We hired GLT architects after meeting with a small committee. We talked about it, and we're going with GLT architects to help us with the roofs, we're in the process of doing that, they're helping with the bidding, make sure that we hire somebody that's very good and get that all out. We talked about some other roof issues, there's some walls that we don't believe when they're put up, have the correct, I guess what you call them is weep, so that it runs the water off, so we're looking at a number of things on, on our books. We'll fill in the board as we go. We're getting carpeting bid. HVAC system is getting put together so that we can bid apples to apples with various companies right now. So those things are all going on at the same time. The technology committee did approve on two go-forward with the staff computers, so we're in the process of doing that. We thought the bid was, was great, I mentioned that to the board last time, and we're gonna move forward with that to buy the staff computers at this time, so that we can start getting all set up. I do wanna bring a business manager in. I'm talking to one right now that I would just like to have come in. We don't have a business manager, and when I say that, just as a consultant, to come in for a day, day and a half, look at our books, look at how we're doing things, make sure we're doing things the most effective, are there things that we could be doing that would save us money? So, probably gonna cost us somewhere around nine hundred dollars or so, but I think it's a good idea. We haven't done that, we don't have our own business manager, and I think it's just a good check for us to do. Looking at the same thing with our food service, so contact persons that, bring them in, just to take a look, you know, to tell us the things that we're doing right, some things or different ideas that might help us improve our efficiency. School calendar, we kind of already talked about. Just be aware that our next snow day really is, I believe, in March twenty-fourth, if I'm not mistaken. One of the things that we're talking about, and I'm hoping they hold off, because on March twenty-third, there is a great presentation coming in, it's National Speaker on, on drugs. I'm going to talk to the teachers, if it doesn't look like we're gonna get a snow date, then I'd probably ask the teachers to flip their work date with the staff development date. That way we can, we could have our whole staff take a look and go to this presentation that's gonna be a pageable on, on drugs, and then the workday would just be, it remains the same, we just flip them, but it is a thing that's on the calendar, and I would like to bring that up to the teachers and see if they're okay with that, in which case, and that would, our snow day really, I'm gonna have to make a decision before I'd like to, but we also have spring break Monday coming up, really Easter Monday, that's also a snow day, so I think if we go a little bit further down the road, I'm fine with giving up that possible staff development day as a snow day, and then if we do get one, then we would use that Easter Monday instead as a snow day, and that allows us to do this particular, here this presentation. So I'll come back to the board for sure at the next meeting, one way or another, and say, "This is what we would like to do," because I don't wanna wait any longer than that, because we have to get some other things set up. I'm gonna set up a few classroom visits, so you'll get an email on that. It's really first come, first served, but if somebody's already gone on one, first one that comes in that hasn't gone, we'll, we'll get that spot, but I'm gonna set up a number of them. I think that the board members that went with me on my, my visits so far, I think they really had a great time, I think they really enjoyed seeing what the great things were happening in our classrooms.
What time of the day do you...
I'd like to continue that. Typically, well, I did the first one, they've been after, I can't remember, the first one might have been a little, a little early for you, Lou, at nine, but the second one was around one o'clock, one o'clock. I can certainly find a time in there a little that you'll be, that'd be available. I'm finding that the morning isn't really good for the board. I didn't get a lot of response back for that, so I'm probably gonna start looking more in the afternoon, so we get more people coming in to see that. But I'm gonna set up even a number of those, I hope, yet this week. So just be aware, our OCR visit, Civil Rights visit, where they're gonna come in and just take a look how we're doing things, and come up and tell us what we're doing right and things that we need to change. Again, as I mentioned, was postponed because of a family emergency, we're looking at the end of March to bring them back in to do that. Our enrollment hasn't changed a whole lot from last time. We're a couple up in the elementary, we're about six down in the secondary, but it's, it has remained constant. Looking for an auditor, we've gotten all the auditors that have come in and presented. I think when Bruce had talked about the Gatsby piece with the new thing, that's really where we've asked the auditor about that, make sure they understand, so that when they come back, particularly for the truth of taxation, they're going to be explained very clearly why it's happening and what we need to do, so that the public can hear that, so, so can our board. I think with that, that's what I have.
Okay, then, do we have any other sharing among the board? We got many too.
Yeah, we had a C meeting, but pretty well covered at the Gatsby.
Okay.
Yeah, if I had ideas, that's, that's correct.
Okay, well, then we have one motion to adjourn. A motion by Lou, seconded by Mark. Yep, yep. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
Stand by.